Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. Got a full house tonight. Be something special going on tonight. Anyway, if you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Father Eric Zubler, the Associate Rector at St. James Episcopal Church.
Let us pray. Gracious and ever living God, we give you thanks for the right and privilege we share in this evening as we govern and guide this city, our hometown city of Fairhope. We pray your blessings on this council and the mayor and all who serve you in this place this night. We ask that this time of meeting would be for the enrichment and growth of this community, inspired by the love you share with each of us in this world. We also ask your blessings on our entire city, that it would always be a beacon of prosperity and justice for all who enter its boundaries. May all its citizens enjoy a quality of life not in terms only of physical comforts and amenities, but an amiable life of happiness and joy in the spirit of your goodness and example. Finally, we also pray for those less fortunate than ourselves. Be with those in our city who have no place to lay their head this night and be with those who are hungry, sick, or infirm. Keep them in your sight, oh God, and deliver us to our eternal home. In the name of God, we pray these things this night. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Zubler.
I have ten seconds for a second.
Okay, council, before we get to the approval of minutes, I do want to make mention that upon advice from our city attorney, they want to review item seven. We should strike item seven, the ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1240 concerning the traffic offenses, misdemeanors, and violations. We should strike that pending their review of that ordinance. Clark, I don't think we have to modify the agenda if we're just striking that. I can strike that right without amending the agenda?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on November the 27th. Council, do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. First, I would like to assure our city employees that we do have the Christmas bonus on the agenda tonight. So what I would like to ask is that if we make any changes to it or want to discuss anything different, that we put it on a work session to discuss because changing that, I don't think is a good time to do it during Christmas. So we had a very successful Christmas parade. Everyone had a great time. Thank you to all of our city employees who worked hard to put this exciting event together. Public Works has already had their post-parade meeting discussing ways they can do better next year, and they are one of the many reasons why we love living in Fairhope. We had a special called meeting last week to discuss the budget, and I have prepared more material to go over with council. I have presented multiple presentations to council and the finance advisory committee on all their concerns, from personnel to addressing cash reserves. And now I will be going over the expenses that look like they're increasing over 2017. I had just four slides that I wanted to show you. We do have another council meeting Monday, December 18th, and that is when the second extension for the budget is going to expire. So my hope is that we pass it on the 18th if we can get all the questions answered. So Jeff, if you have that, it's the first slide is cash reserves. It's just four slides. I went over cash reserves and I went back to 2013 because I think there was a concern that we were taking rainy day funds and paying for, you know, payroll or something like that, and that's not the case. We do pay for our capital purchases and improvements from our reserve funds. We've increased our reserve funds just in fiscal 2018 over $8 million. So this is to go back 2013, the cash reserves that we've spent since 2013 to what is proposed in 2018 budget. The next slide, the additional cuts that I presented on December 6th. We went over capital purchases, decreased 380,000 personnel. These are all approximate, but it's around 450,000 miscellaneous operating, an additional 92,000. And so that takes off the budget 922,000. Again, we're just going to talk about this in more detail, but these are the highlights. Next slide is talking about the 2017, what was included in 2017 that rolled over to 2018 because the budget wasn't approved until the end of April. So you only had May, June, July, August, September, five months, and some of those capital improvements and some of the hires didn't happen during those five months. So the 2017 purchases, we might have purchased them now, again, because this was proposed in September, but the amount of 2017 capital purchases and improvements that was in the 2017 budget that rolled over is 603,800. The total amount for 2017 personnel is 190,000. So the total rolled over from 2017, again, some of it's already been filled or purchased, but that total, just to give you an idea, is 793,800 dollars. And then the last slide is combining the cuts that we discussed on December 6th and then the 2017 rollover. So you can see that the total amount for those two items, 1,715,800. So I thought that would be a good thing just to think about. Okay, go through the... We are going to, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we're doing a three-day membership drive for the rec center. On the agenda tonight, we'll see this because council does have to approve this reduction, but it's been discussed before the meeting, but we are going to, if you can bring that slide up, we're going to have our annual membership drive. You can see for Fairhope residents and Fairhope non-residents, that is an annual price for those, all of those packages, and it's a big reduction. So we're hoping that this gift certificate people will use for stocking stuffers, but also look at it as an investment in our community. And we're going to do this three-day membership drive and see how it goes and maybe do something similar, but not as good of a deal for the new year. And on a different note, Bobby Hall resigned as our PGA golf professional at Quail Creek. Bobby has been with us for 11 years and has certainly left his mark on that facility, which has nothing to do with the state of the facility right now, by the way. Bobby told me and that he and Peggy have aging parents in Hattiesburg, and the pull is strong for them to return home and be with them. Theirs is a critical life choice, and we wish both Bobby and Peggy both worked for the city well and much happiness. And lastly, the calendar that I mentioned, I'm not sure if it was last council meeting or the council meeting before that. Eric, if you could come up for a minute. All of our volunteers received this wall calendar, and it has actually 13 local photographs in it. And we decided to print an overage for the Booster Club to sell, and Eric is going to give you some of those details.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council, the mayor approached the Booster Club last week about the Booster Club being able to sell those calendars and appropriate that money for capital improvements at the school. One of the things, you know, the Booster Club has, their primary function is capital improvements at these facilities. We also pay playoff expenses. We do other things. I think last year, our total expenditures at the school was in excess of $67,000. So the opportunity is to sell these calendars. What we're going to do is we're going to offer these calendars. Anyone who hadn't seen them, it's a, it's filled with photographs and art from local Fairhope artists. It's a very Fairhope document. It's very, very nice.
You can pass this around. We need it back because you have to have the money.
These are being printed, or these have been printed. And what the Booster Club is going to do is we're going to offer them for $10 apiece. They are going to be available at the Cat's Meow Downtown Fairhope High School until they close this week. And you can also go and buy them online at the Booster Club website, which is piratenation.live. Used to be piratenationlive.com. It is now piratenation.live. You can purchase them online, and we will happily come and deliver those to you. We're going to continue to offer these throughout the year. We've got our spring Meet the Pirates breakfast that's going to happen January 20th, where we'll have middle school and high school teams coming. And then Drawdown is February 17th, and then continuing on. So we are very thankful and on behalf of the Booster Club, thank you to Mayor Wilson for approaching us about this, and it's on the agenda tonight. So in advance, I will also thank the council. And if anyone has any questions or anything, we'll be happy to answer. And once again, just on behalf of that, thank you all very much for all you did.
Thank you, Eric. And I just wanted to mention, this is item 18 on the agenda. This was a matter of us making a final decision in between council meetings on what to print more. And the 2450, I was going to just approve and pay for myself or through my business, but then it was noted that this was something that the council needed to approve if it was going to be paid back. But anyway, just to clear the air, if it's not approved, we're going to make it happen. But I think you're going to approve this 2450 because I think they can still make, I think, around 17,000 if they sell them all by doing that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item is public participation. This would be pertaining to agenda items numbers five through 32. If you would like to address the council on the agenda items only, please come and name and address for the record. If you have comments pertaining to non-agenda items, that must wait until the end of the meeting. So I'll open the floor to public participation on agenda items.
Can we do the award presentation now?
You can.
Thank you.
I'll let you do that.
My name is Charlene Lee, and I do work with Baldwin County Trailblazers. We do work with the Walton Cubus. And the Trailblazers have worked for the past 20 years and partnered with many organizations on issues related to livable communities, to trails, to sidewalks, to making our eastern shore work well for people to be able to move about in all types of ways. And we've recognized over the years that people stick their necks out and often take far and tough stands on issues that are important to them. And we started out a number of years ago, actually when I was working with Smart Coast, and we recognize those people with a giraffe award, looking at the fact that you have a long neck and you look out into the future, and you're willing to stick your neck out to support something that you think is valuable within your community. And we began to award the giraffe award to people who did take these stands and had keen vision and stuck their neck out. So, and the Trailblazers, actually, Tico Wiseman was the founder of the Trailblazers, was the very last person that received a giraffe award. And she spent 20 years working on the Eastern Shore Trail, which has been a great asset for all of our communities to be able to be connected by a trail. And also, we recognize the city for what they did with complete streets, with passing the very first complete street policy in the whole city. Looking at the fact that our streets need to be safe for every user group of streets. Well, the Trailblazers is getting a lot of new energy because they've gotten a lot of new board members that are really excited about the programming going on now. So real quickly, the board members could just stand. I'd like to recognize you. You're a Trailblazer board member. Okay, so there are a number of them throughout the audience, so we are very happy and proud to have you come up. And Mayor Wilson, if you wouldn't mind standing near.
Oh, yes.
Over here. And so when we give a giraffe award, we like some representation of the giraffe, and we would like to recognize Laurel Aiken, if you could come forward, because she spent a lot of time creating a very artistically beautiful giraffe that is kind of named Nelson with somebody that stuck out, sticking out your head. And so, and then please unveil the giraffe. Yes, first, we're going to unveil the giraffe that's kind of thinking about giving out the giraffe award. Okay? So y'all, let's give a hand to Laurel for a beautiful giraffe. She's been a part of a giraffe award presentation in the past. And then for a hand, I didn't go by like an electronic. So you'll have to come up and look at me with the color crayons. And so Laurel, thank you very much for your contributions in creating Nelson. Now, we want to give the first giraffe award ever given by Baldwin County Trailblazers. And we remember this founder, Tico Wiseman, and anyone who knew her in the audience. If you knew her, there was no stopping Tico. Like she was on a mission. She was on a mission and just kind of get out of her way because she was going to get it done. And she really created these trails. Well, we see that there's a much smaller version of Tico that has come about in our community that also has the persistence and diligence and dedication to make something happen that's quite unusual. And so I would like at this point for Annabelle Vestal to stand up beside Mayor. She is the founder of the Trailblazers, Tico Wiseman, and the president of the Trailblazers, Molly, would you read? I've got it right here. It is beautifully, would you read how, what we have said about, all right, the Trailblazers, 2017 Giraffe Award is presented to Annabelle Vestal. For the past four years, Annabelle has worked diligently to convince multiple levels of government officials to fund a sidewalk to connect her neighborhood to downtown Fairhope. She began her effort at five years old, meeting with the Fairhope mayor. She met with Baldwin County commissioners to get a cost analysis for the .2-mile sidewalk connection. She documented traffic patterns and initiated a petition, obtaining 65 signatures supporting the sidewalk. When she had gathered all the information needed, Annabelle asked Fairhope to partner with the county to fund the sidewalk. Then she presented her proposal to the Eastern Shore MBO Policy Board, who agreed to earmark funds in the 2016 budget. Annabelle showed her appreciation to politicians and workers building the sidewalk by bringing many plates of homemade cookies and doughnuts. Annabelle Vestal stuck her neck out and used her keen vision to make the sidewalk a reality for everyone. The Baldwin County Trailblazers is proud to present its 2017 Giraffe Award to Annabelle Vestal. In her honor, her work, her dedication, and her persistence, Annabelle reflects the spirit of the Trailblazer founder, Tico Wiseman, who never let barriers stand in the way of improving our community. Thank you. And then the artist wall has created something else. Would you like to present that?
Yes. I don't understand what I'm reading. Yeah, like I'm going to block someone type of thing, right? You know, nowadays when we hear hero, I think we immediately think of like first responders or people in the military, but I think we need to remember, there's all kinds of heroes and all kinds of acts that make you a hero. And a hero isn't defined by, see, this would have been bad when you were five. A hero isn't defined by height, isn't defined by gender, and a hero isn't defined by age. And, holy, I look at myself now. It's a, I hear it's for my own. So you can't take nothing home that you can take alone.
Okay. And we thank, we thank you, Mayor, and we thank the council for the time to be able. We thought it was very appropriate to present this in front of a governmental body because that's who Annabelle's been working with. To create what would take a whole organization to do, one small child has done through her dishes. So thank you, everyone.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
That's great. Thank you. That's great. Did she know she was free?
I don't think she did.
I didn't.
Yeah, because I mean, I didn't know I was doing that tonight, which I could have because I would have just segwayed into. Very sweet. I feel like you can hopefully.
I think there's, I think there's.
Okay.
I'll remind everybody that public participation is still open for items five through 32. If you'd like to address the council on any of the items five through 32.
Yes, it's all right.
Yes, sir. Would you come to the podium?
My name is Joe Reamer, and I'm one of the founding conductors and members of the Baldwin Pops, our community band here in Fairhope. We are about 70 strong of all volunteers, and thanks to the support of the Fairhope City Council, we have been able to remain in business for about 20 years. This is our 20th year. We're right in the middle of it, and we've performed over 200 concerts throughout Baldwin County, 110 of them in Fairhope, either on the bluff or in the civic center. And it's only, and you allow us to store our equipment and rehearse, and we couldn't be existence without you, and just want to say how much we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Willie J. Williams. I'm the president of Baldwin County Marloth King Celebration Committee. I'm here tonight to ask the council support. The, this is first time before a lot of new faces and stuff, but the Marloth King has been going on about 33 years. I think 33 years ago, it was decided to rotate it and not have it in one city. So this activity rotates between Fairhope, Daphne, BamaNet, and Foley. Last year in Foley, it was a great success because we added an additional element of having a fun zone for the kids and where community groups can interact and different people from different racial backgrounds can interact and talk with one another from different religion. So it was great, and we adding it again this year. So we asking for your support. I think we ran into some issues about some new rules and regulations that happened, but that happens every four years and stuff. Normally, the city reaches out to us, BamaNet, Foley. Normally, they calling sometime after we have a, after celebration to go through what went good, what went bad. Last year, I mean, everything was just great. It was a lot of turnout, a lot of churches, a lot of groups, the kids played until they went down. And last year, OY got participation. Some of the young folk got jobs with the new OY development down there. But we again ask for your support. Ask you to come out and get to meet some of the folks there because that's a great town. That's a federal holiday, and we again here to ask for your support and help to try to get this going on in Fairhope in 1989. I think this will make it 32nd year, and it going to happen directly on Dr. Marloth King's birthday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close public participation pertaining to agenda items. Remember that you will have an opportunity to address the council on other matters following the conclusion of tonight's agenda items. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. I just, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the Christmas parade last Friday night. We had a great time, great, great showing. I think we went through our throws a little quicker than we wanted to. We had six, six kids on our float, which made it that much more fun. We had a great time, but it was great to see everybody out there, and we appreciate it and want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of things. First, I hope everyone enjoyed the snow Friday night. That was pretty special. We had our whole neighborhood out at about 10:30 throwing snowballs, so anytime it snows in Fairhope, you're going to bring out a crowd. Couple of other things just related to Christmas, you know, it's a, it's a tough time for a lot of people, so if you have the opportunity and the means, please do something nice for those less fortunate. And secondly, again, I know not everyone can afford to, but if you have the means, do some shopping in downtown Fairhope. That's what really makes this town special, and I know the merchants could use your support. I did run into the mayor Saturday shopping in town, so we're out there spending some money trying to keep it local. So just get out there and support our merchants. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'd like to say what Councilman Robinson was talking about, the Christmas parade is one of my favorite parades. I think the bet was we were going to fall off the back of the truck, but we hung on pretty good. And all we need to do is start figuring out how to have a little portion control on the throws, and we make it last. We've never, in the history of being here, we've never made the throws last the entire parade. So we're, we're going to have to bring some more, but we'll see what we can do next year. But we appreciate the town coming out and supporting this, and it was a job well done for the city crews. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boone. I just want to mention regarding the throws, if somebody hit your child with a hard rock candy or a square of caramel, that was Councilman Boone and Councilman Robinson. Maybe the mayor threw some of those too. I don't know, but it wasn't me. We always get the big hard stuff, but anyway. Also, I want to mention that the Fairhope City Council will be at Fairhope Brewing Company Thursday, Tending Bar. They serve beer and wine, and we will be working for tips, and all the tips will go to the Fairhope Educational and Enrichment Foundation. So I want to invite staff, the mayor, the members of the community to come down and drink modestly, but generous, tip generously, and all proceeds will go to FIF, so I'm going to get a plug in for that. And without, I'll close. Council comments. Any comments on that? You hard candy throwers? All right. We'll move on to item five, which is a final adoption. This is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1266, introduced at the last regularly scheduled city council meeting. Article six, Garbage and Trash Collection and Disposal, section 21-75. In the exercise of the police power of the city and for the purpose of enabling the city to perform a governmental function, there is hereby fixed the following garbage service fees for every occupant within the city, which rates will increase $1 per month each year for three consecutive years, beginning 2018 and shall go into effect on the first billing cycle after January 1st of each year, beginning January 2018, ending January 2020. Now, this is for all customers, residential and commercial. And as I said before, this was introduced at the November 27th city council meeting. Just one final word on that is these rates have not been increased in about 12 years and long overdue. We were falling a little bit behind on this, and had we just simply increased these one quarter or 25 cents a year, they would be much less than where they're going to be even in three years. We are picking up your garbage twice a week, where most, if not all municipalities in the county picks up once a week. So we do it twice a week, and we will be at or below the average cost for the county and municipality. So public work still delivering a fantastic. Does Richard Johnson need to come up and explain anymore? You want to say something, Richard?
Just if you have any questions.
Okay, if you have any questions, Mr. Johnson will be happy to answer them. If you don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
I'm moved for final adoption. Second.
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you call that question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance is approved. Thank you, council. Uh, item number six is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number twelve thirty-three, known as the Business License Code of the City of Fairhope, the Schedule of Licenses and Fees. This would be Chapter Eight, specifically, Section Three C Issu, Issue Fee and Section Sixteen Penalties and Interest pursuant to, uh, State Code eleven fifty-one dash ninety and eleven fifty-one dash ninety-three. Would somebody like to introduce that ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, ordinance been introduced. Uh, council, this was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, this is basically required by state statute that, that we pass this and, and be, uh, in concert with, uh, state law. Uh, I think that we had stated the last meeting that we thought the, uh, penalties and the interest rate penalty was a little bit steep, and could we reduce that, but we found out since that we cannot and, and remain in compliance with the state statute. So unfortunately, I don't think we left with any other option than to adopt it as it was amended. So, um, clerk, do we have to suspend with the rules to vote on this for immediate consideration?
Yes, you do.
Okay, is there a need to pass this tonight?
Jennifer's saying yes.
Is there a need? There is a need, there's a sense of urgency.
I have to have renewals out by December thirty-third, in order for me to print and process and fail them by then, um, I, I can't leave it.
Okay, well, I kind of, I kind of remembered something like that, that's why I asked the question, if there was a sense of urgency. Okay. Any questions for Jennifer, council? Does somebody want to entertain a motion to, uh, for immediate consideration?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for immediate consideration. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you call that question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, since that was unanimous, we can now, uh, vote for final adoption.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Clerk, will you call that question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, since that was unanimous, we can now, uh, vote for final adoption.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, clerk, will you call a question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance is amended. Thank you, council. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, item seven, uh, is removed from the agenda. Item eight is a request to approve the twenty-eighteen regular city council meetings. If you have not done so, and you want to look those over, um, we try to get these as close to being put in concrete as we can, although there are times, uh, things come up during the year which we do have to change meetings, uh, so we will have other opportunities to do this. Council, can I entertain a motion to approve the dates of the twenty-eighteen regular city council meetings?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, those meeting dates are approved, thank you, council. Item nine is a resolution authorizing the submission of a twenty-eighteen Transportation Alternative Program grant to Aldi to construct new sidewalk facilities for pedestrians along South Section Street, uh, from County Road Three to Old Bata's Road, then along Old Bata's Road to Greeno Road, connecting multiple developments in the Fairhope corporate limits. The new sidewalks, I don't know what that word means, proposed as approximately two and a half miles in length and connects to existing city sidewalks, and this also authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the city. Do you have any questions for Sherri Lee or Richard? If you look at that, the City of Fairhope will be responsible for twenty percent of this cost, uh, which would amount to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is a pretty good deal for two and a half miles of sidewalk, that's.
Got that right.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, pass this resolution, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item ten is a resolution that Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Sawgrass Consulting to perform professional land surveying services to survey the Fairhope docks, marina, and boatyard with a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-eight hundred dollars. I think that, I don't see Drew, uh, but I think that we would all agree that we were waiting on this survey to be done and performed so that we can put the boatyard, uh, or what will be defined as the boatyard property up for leasing. I'll entertain a motion, pass.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the selection of the consulting for the land survey services. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, resolution passes, thank you, council. Item number eleven is a resolution to award the bid for beverage concessions twenty-eighteen for the rec department for various city facilities and parks. Mr. Cool?
You will see these tabulated under tab eleven. Yes?
Kind of self-explanatory, you know, this is a, just to keep, uh, kind of, uh, to keep all our, our youth leagues, uh, in good equipment, because in, in the, uh, bid, the winner is responsible for supplying any kind of coolers we need and being there within, I think, forty-eight hours to repair or replace if something goes down. All they have to do is make a phone call to the vendor, and the product's delivered. And, uh, also, it encompasses a, uh, franchise agreement for all the vending machines on city property.
If you look at the totals, Mr. Cool, the Coca-Cola is a little bit higher, but I believe that's because Buffalo Rock did not submit some cost for some of the items.
Some of the product they, they didn't offer, yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Any other questions for Mr. Cool? Somebody want to, uh, entertain a motion to award the bid to Coca-Cola Bottling, Bottling Company?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Thank you.
Bid is awarded, thank you, Mr. Cool. Item number twelve is a resolution to award the bid for multiple repairs, repairs, projects after Hurricane Nate, uh, for the Public Works Department, bid number zero zero seven dash eighteen. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, this is a result of a competitive bid process, and you see the tabulations. We had three attend the pre-bid conference, but only one submitted a performing qualified bid, and we are recommending, uh, that bid be approved and accepted by council. And just as a note, uh, we already have confirmation that funding, uh, or reimbursement at seventy-five percent is coming from FEMA, and still anticipating another twelve and a half percent coming from Alabama EMA, so this project will be reimbursed hopefully at the rate of eighty-seven and a half percent. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to award this bid to, operated with a total amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. The City of Fairhope's portion at twelve and a half percent would be twenty-four thousand, one fifty-one, and thirty-eight, or if I can do that math real quick, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and two seventy-six, if we have to pay twenty-five percent. Did you do that quick, Mr. Peterson?
Checking on that? So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I like these. Okay, hearing no further discussion, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay. Item thirteen is a resolution to procure additional printing of calendars to be inserted, which would be four times a year in the utility bill mailing in the months that the printing is required for the Community Affairs Department with a total cost of four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Mayor, would you speak to that, please?
I'm giving the budget presentation, so I'm sorry, what agenda is this?
Oh, no, that's fine, that would be the additional printing of the calendars to be inserted in the utility bills.
This is, you know that this is not the count, twelve-month calendar, but the four-page?
Like the calendar?
Yes. We, um, got a quote on just regular paper, inserting this into all utilities, then everyone is getting at least the highlights of what's going on over two months period of time. We're still gonna distribute the, um, other one at some of our facilities, because you've, you know, you have visitors and you have some of the people that like that nicer calendar, but I think we could print less of those. So the total amount that we're increasing it, and I wish I had that in front of me, but it's really not that much. I just think this is a more effective way of getting the calendar out to everyone, and it won't cost very much, it's, it's just the printing, because the postage is the same.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor and council? I will entertain a motion to procure these calendars.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the calendars, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, additional printing is approved, thank you, council. Item fourteen is a resolution to purchase Microsoft Office three sixty-five and Microsoft Exchange subscription annual licensing for the IT department. This type of licenses needed are on the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Buying Group Contract Number Zero One dash sixty-five, therefore it does not have to be let out for bid. This has already been nationally bid through the NCPA's bid process. The total cost will be forty-five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and forty cents. And, uh, Jeff, if you're there, if you could come to the podium?
Give him a minute. He is here, right?
He was. I hear him.
Jeff, is this an annual, this is an annual contract?
Yes, yes, it's just, uh, this is our third time with, uh, renewing these licenses.
Okay, what type of savings are we getting through that buying process?
I think it was thirty percent.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? I wanted to just ask basically, basically if this was our annual cost.
Yes, we'll see this every year.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to acquire these software products.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved, thank you, council. Item fifteen is a resolution to purchase vehicle detection pods for two intersections, uh, North Section and Gafer, and also North Section at Volanta. This type of equipment is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The co, total cost will be twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Mr. Watson? Pretty self-explanatory, right? Proximity sensors?
Detection equipment electronics. For Gafer and North Section and Volanta North Section.
I guess the one question I had was, do you know, if somebody pulls up to those stoplights coming from, uh, let's say they're coming west on Volanta or Gafer, and they take a right, does it sense that car, and then somebody's going north or south on section, they don't see a car there, but then their light turns red because somebody came?
Right, not currently, currently, the loop detection, all the detection equipment is failed due to the resurfacing, so it's all switched on time now.
Right.
But once the new equipment gets in, we will be able to detect.
Will it know that a car has left, I mean, or will it automatically change the light?
I believe so, yes.
Do you know the technology covers that?
It does, well, this is a wireless technology, a pod detection system that where the, the current equipment is a twisted pair detection, a old technology, this is a wireless puck system, so, um, this company will come down as well, uh, when we install Volanta in section. Um, the traffic that kind of backs up after a ballgame or whatever, um, we're gonna have extended.
The Christmas parade, maybe?
Right, we're gonna have extended, uh, detection going east on Volanta to detect and be able to get the traffic out from football games and let it flush out quicker, so, but...
Because after the Christmas parade, it was backed up.
I believe it.
From Gafer all the way into town.
Right.
But once you got past that light, I mean, one car would pull up going Gafer, and it'd stop five hundred cars from leaving town. It was, it was a mess. Jeremy, were you waving your hand?
I would just say, to answer your question, yes, there being delays in those, so that if something, the car does start moving, there'd be a couple of delays.
Awesome. I was hoping the technology had gotten to that point before you spent twenty-one thousand dollars. All right, any questions, council?
No, this would be a good improvement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to purchase these vehicle detection pods.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Joe, I guess it's a little late since we approved it, but will the electric department install these?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Item number sixteen is a resolution that the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to change the title of Director of Golf with a pay range for a grade twenty-eight to Head Golf Professional with a pay range of grade twenty-six. Uh, who's gonna discuss that? Ms. Mazer, will you?
Um, we've recently put the golf course under the aegis of the Parks and Rec Department, um, so Tom is the director, and I'm very pleased to say things are going well as a result, um, of that. The changing of the, the grade reflects, it doesn't change the responsibility so much of the head golf pro, but it does change him not being a director, which he has been. The savings is anywhere from eight to thirteen thousand dollars between the high and the low in the pay grades. And we are about to start interviewing. We have six resumes in-house.
Okay, one thing I would point out was that, uh, I don't have a problem with, with changing a title or, or pay grade, but if any of the job duties changed, there's nothing in our, a book that discusses what those changes are, and if we're changing a position, I think the council would like to know what, you know, what those, if, if there are new job duties, or if they've changed, I think that we...
No, there aren't, there aren't any new duties, we may have changed some wording, but there's, there are no new duties, basically, it's the same position.
No, and no duties have been removed either from that?
No.
Okay. Any questions, council, for Ms. Mazer? Okay, I hear none. I'll entertain a, a motion, uh, to change the pay grade in the title, uh, for the Director of Golf to Head Golf Professional, and also change the pay grade?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change this in the job classification plan. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay. Item seventeen is a resolution to authorize a one-time supplemental pay increase for city employees. And, uh, I will take this on, and Mayor, you'd mentioned this in your comments, uh, in that, uh, that you'd hoped that we wouldn't change that, and we, in fact, are not going to change that. Uh, there were a few options, uh, one was to leave it as it is, and one was to only give these one-time pay raises, which, there, let's call it what it is, it's a Christmas bonus, uh, or a year-end bonus, and, um, the, the second option was to only give those bonuses to people that had been here, uh, for a year or more, and that would simplify things, and it would save the city a little bit of money, but in the council's view, uh, we didn't want to look at that person that had been here eleven months and say they get nothing, or ten months, and then where do you draw the line on that? So the formula that, that gives you twenty dollars per month up to two hundred and forty dollars a year, we, we liked that, and then for the part of the, we liked the, the formula that gave the people that had been here one year a certain amount, and two years, three years, or four years. So we kept it essentially as it was, and, uh, with all due respect to the burden that it places on the personnel that have to make those calculations, we did consider that as well, but we wanted to consider the entire city and all of the employees rather than, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, make it, it, it would've made it a little bit easier they're, let's call it what it is, is a Christmas bonus or a year-end bonus. And the second option was to only give those bonuses to people that had been here for a year or more, and that would simplify things, and it would save the city a little bit of money. But in the council's view, we didn't want to look at that person that had been here eleven months and say they get nothing, or ten months, and then where do you draw the line on that? So, the formula that gives you twenty dollars per month up to two-hundred-and-forty dollars a year, we liked that. And then for the part of the others, we liked the formula that gave the people that had been here one year a certain amount, and two years, three years, or four years. So, we kept it essentially as it was, and with all due respect to the burden that it places on the personnel that have to make those calculations, we did consider that as well, but we wanted to consider the entire city and all of the employees rather than, you know, I'll be honest, make it, it would have made it a little bit easier for some, for the staff. So, thank that staff that has to go through that work to get that done, too. And that'd be the finance department, Jill and her group that has to make that happen. So, if y'all see her, thank her for that, for all the work that she pushed together for that. If the council approves it, thank her. Okay, council, I will entertain a resolution to authorize the one-time supplemental pay increase.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item eighteen is a resolution, the city council hereby appropriates twenty-four, two-thousand four-hundred-and-fifty dollars for calendars to the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club, with any proceeds from the calendars to be earmarked for capital improvements of men's and women's athletic facilities located at the Fairhope High School. These improvements would include upgrades of locker rooms, upgrade of bathroom and shower facilities, purchases of needed equipment, resurfaces of practice facilities, et cetera. And as you heard the mayor speak to earlier, that they, which will help them be self-sufficient, they will mark these calendars up a sufficient amount and try to make up the difference. And, you know, we did not give money to them in our community development funds this year, and I think that this will make up some of that gap. But then that thirty-five thousand dollar contribution we've given them for five years had expired. That was a pledge made to help pay for the indoor practice facility that's used by the boys and girls sports out there at the high school. I think that I covered that. One thing I didn't see was I didn't see who would be printing those calendars and the cost for that. I just see a total amount. And to be actually fully correct on this, Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing this to us and giving us the opportunity. I'm not so certain that you really even had to.
Well, this is how it.
But I appreciate you doing it.
What we were going to do is the twenty-five hundred for, we're doing the calendars instead of the Christmas ornament. We had twenty-five hundred dollars for that, and we printed that, but then we added, so the total amount is forty-nine fifty.
Okay, so that's right.
You see what I'm saying?
Then you have to, even if it's an aggregate.
Right. Exactly.
All right, well, I appreciate that. While we're on that, Mayor, I would say that these calendars, I'm sure, are beautiful, but those, I do miss those ornaments because people will hang them on their tree every year and look back at what they received for being a volunteer. So, I hope that we're giving a heads up next year. I'm not so sure that we wouldn't, I'm not so sure that we wouldn't fund some of that. And I know you're cutting expenses, and I appreciate that, too, but those little keepsake ornaments, a lot of people, a lot of people really appreciate those.
I think that that was just one of those things that it's, it is an ornament, I think it was a collector's thing, it's just not, you know, if I'm doing a thank you, it's something that I wanted to have a different thank you, because it's, you know, a new administration. I'm not comparing, but it's just a twelve-month calendar that they can use all year round, and we kind of honored some of our local photographers in the process. I think we could do both if you wanted to do both, you know? Because it's not a huge expense, and our volunteers are worth it, so.
We'll talk about it next October.
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass this resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes.
Mr. President? I was just wondering what the price of these underpriced calendars are, being sold at. We've mentioned them a thousand times, how we're going to sell them.
Ten dollars.
And I'm sure it's underpriced, I was just wondering what they were.
The price is going to be ten dollars apiece, and once we sell out of the first printing, any subsequent printings will be handled directly by the Booster Club. So, once we get through this first batch, which we will, we're going to, we'll contact the printer directly, and then the Booster Club will handle all costs associated with printing additional ones.
And I want to say that Mr. Cortinez, although he's a city employee, is representing the Booster Club right now, he's not there as.
I can take my badge off.
As a city employee. He's president of the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club, and does a good job. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We did pass that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, clerk. After eighteen items, I get a little, lose track a little bit. Okay, item nineteen is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and the Baldwin Pops for use of the city facilities depending on availability, and allow them to meet twice a month at the civic center and to store items if necessary, to provide free concerts yearly and resources, including personnel, but not security, after normal business hours, and provides an exception to the sign ordinance by allowing banners for their citywide events and to be, them to be displayed ten days prior to those events. I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And council, we're going to scoop through these pretty quick because I know these are already passed in the community development budget. Item twenty is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and Thomas Hospital for the use of city facilities, including streets and parks, depending on availability to help put on health-related programs, meetings and programs affiliated with Thomas Hospital. Throughout the year in the Fairhope community, schools are at the hospital facilities. They would be responsible for any incidentals, damages, or security if necessary. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, allowing this. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Item number twenty-one is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to hold a three-day special for a recreation center membership drive for the city of Fairhope. And thank you for presenting that slide during your comments, Mayor Wilson. So, if you have any questions, you could direct them to Sherri Lee, or Tom, or the mayor. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
To approve this.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, authorizing the membership drive. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item number twenty-two is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Trail Blazers for an appropriation of five thousand dollars to support the Smart Walks and the Walking School Bus program. I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. Item twenty-three is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce for an appropriation of twenty-one thousand dollars, which includes fifteen thousand for the annual Leaders Council program to advertise and promote the city of Fairhope. I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All who's in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you, Casey, in the audience. Item twenty-four is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with the Eastern Shore Arts Center for the use of facilities and for an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars for funds to support and sponsor the educational programs for the Arts Center's Academy of Fine Arts. I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, council. And if you want to see the details of these resolutions, I can, at any time, stop and read the entire resolution, but you'll see them on your iPad, or if you have a book, you should see it in your book as well. Okay, council. Item number twenty-five is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and the downtown Fairhope Business Association for an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars to advertise and promote the city of Fairhope. I'll entertain a motion for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion?
Council President, I will abstain from voting.
Okay, be noted that councilman has abstained. Councilman Robinson has abstained from the vote. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All who's in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item twenty-six is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and Ecumenical Ministries Incorporated for an appropriation of ten thousand dollars to support the needs of Fairhope residents. I'll entertain a motion, passes resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, contract is approved. Thank you, council. Item twenty-six is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract, oops, item twenty-seven, I'm sorry, is an application for a nonprofit tax-exempt license or an alcoholic beverage license by the Friends of the Fairhope Library, Public Library, for the Chocolate and Champagne Fantasy 2018, a fundraiser to help the Fairhope Public Library located at 501 Fairhope Avenue on January twenty-seventh, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Chief Pettis, is there any reason we should deny this application?
No reason at all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this application.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, application is approved. Thank you, council. Item twenty-eight is a request of Pat Lee with Children of the World Incorporated, requesting permission to hold its twenty-second annual Chinese New Year's Parade by allowing the streets, DeLamar Avenue, Fairhope Avenue, between South Church Street and South Section Street, and South Section Street between Morphe Avenue and Fairhope Avenue to be closed from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. on Saturday, February the 10th, 2018. The parade begins and ends at the Fairhope Methodist Church. I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Chief Pettis, any reason to deny this request?
No, not this, nothing to give a damn here.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor of granting this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is approved. Item twenty-nine is a request from the Eastern Shore Optimists Club requesting two thousand dollars through an in-kind donation to use the Fairhope Civic Center for the Dogwood Trail Pageant on Saturday, January thirteenth, 2018, and the Dale Champ Suite for the Arts and Crafts Reception on March the seventeenth, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant this request. Any further discussion?
Just a question for clarification. I know we discussed in-kind during the work session, and was there any reason we can't offer this as a?
It is in-kind.
Right, and so we're good with that. Just following up from our conversation.
Yeah, no, I think this has been done for, what, forty or fifty years now, maybe? So, and that's what I was saying, we can, we can grant that. If you have something that says can't, we grant it, it's done.
Okay.
Good question, though. Okay, do we have a motion and a second, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay, any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. All who's in favor of granting this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted. Thank you. Item thirty is a request from Michael Graham, the Executive Director of the Haven No Kill Animal Shelter, requesting permission to hold its annual fundraiser, the Mystic Mutzle Reverie Parade, or MMOR, on Saturday, February the third, 2018, on the same day as the K O E R Parade, by allowing the streets in downtown Fairhope to be closed from 12 p.m. to 2 p.m. and the use of the community park as staging and a tent area. Fundraisers to be used to offset operating costs, veterinary care, medical supplies, et cetera. The streets will close at 10 a.m. and reopen two hours after the parade ends. This only applies to the area from Magnolia by the Hampton Inn to Johnson on Section Street and Bancroft to Summit on Fairhope Avenue. All other streets in the city are to remain open until 5 p.m., in which time the streets necessary for the Mardi Gras Parade will be closed. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item thirty-one is a request from the Fairhope Educational and Enrichment Foundation to waive the green fees for their annual mayor's invitational golf tournament. I think they're up to number twenty-something or thirty-something on that. It's also been approved for many years. I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. This is also Mr. Conyers, you know, an in-kind type donation. No money changes hands. And also, it's done on Thursday, which is the slowest day of the week at Quail Creek in the afternoon, for those that might be interested in that. Have a motion and a second?
Yes, you do.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All who's in favor of granting this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, request is granted. Thank you, council. Item thirty-two, request of the patient, Mr. Willie Williams, Baldwin County Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Committee, requesting permission for parade slash march beginning at 10:30 a.m. on January the fifteenth, 2018, for the celebration of Dr. the Reverend Martin Luther King Junior birthday to close the streets, the use of the Fairhope Civic Center for the program after march, and the use of the Fairhope Civic Center parking lot after the program for children's fun play area until 4 p.m. And one of the reasons that he brought this request, this was brought before the council is that this was brought after the deadline for which requests are to be made. So, I had talked this over with Council President Prochem Robinson, and we had agreed that we should allow that request to be considered after the deadline, and I think it would still be subject to, you know, the usual parade permitting process at the nonprofit rates. Councilman Robinson stepped in and helped me out. Was there any other items that we discussed on that?
Uh, no, we would waive the, we would waive the deadline for filing, and we would allow the permitting at the standard nonprofit rate.
At the nonprofit rate.
And I think all other applicable rules.
Right, and everything else was applicable, same as we did for every other, that's right, in organizations. Provide the proof of insurance, I believe.
That's right.
Was one of them, maybe the only one I could think of. So, that's the request is being considered. Any questions? Okay, no questions, I will entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to grant the request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, request is granted. Thank you, council. Public participation. If you have any other items to bring forth before the council, please state your name and address for the rep.
Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street, in reference to item number twelve, awarding the bid's municipal piers repair project. I would like to have the council and the mayor consider upgrading both the piers at White Street and Pierce Street, I mean, Pecan Street, and having covers put on them similar to Orange Street. I've had numerous citizens request this during the summer. It gets very hot out there, and they just cannot stand out there or sit out there without some kind of cover and seats. All I'm asking is that you consider it, look at the cost, and if necessary, we'll find another way to pay for it. But it would be good if the city did it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Johnson still here?
He knows about it.
Okay, yeah, I bet he does. Yes, sir.
Good day, Mr. Burrell, I, I'm trying to get some clarification on that, because we are a small nonprofit organization. We run at a zero. We provide a lot of funds to college students that, from this community, that goes to various colleges, I think over the years, about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. None of the other cities have, have charged any of this, and, and I know they sent me the council, but we was unaware of this, because this only comes around to Fairhope every four years. And mostly, every city reaches out. I think we had a similar situation like this in Fairhope, the last time we came to Fairhope, but the council was like, this is a national holiday, this is not a thing, we trying to make it available for the various citizens throughout the county and the various cities that we go through. And, and I think the bill that he presented to me, you know, it would just totally wipe out a lot of scholarship money, and that's basically what we have.
Do you recall what that bill was? Do you recall what that was?
It was over a thousand dollars.
We're talking about a thousand dollars, well-
And that, that ain't even counting the special event insurance, I'm an insurance agent, so I, I know that, but when I looked at that, I mean, we having a meeting this Saturday, and, you know, we just, you know, I don't know, you know, like you say, none of the cities, the city has provided, you know, the facility, the police protection, you know, the, you know, we go there, have a program, the last time we was here, I forgot who the person who spoke here, it was very successful, everything. I mean, we had FBI director here, we had the, no, that was up in Daphne, I think we had A.J. Cooper here, you know, variety of folks, but, you know, I just want to make it clear, because, because I don't take a salary, none of the board members, and I know that that would take a big hit on our treasury, and then we would have to tell some kids, because that's one of the biggest things in our organization, because some members want to give a thousand dollars a year, and we only afford to give five hundred to, you know, two or three students a year.
Well, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't know, I'll just speak for myself, I won't speak for any other council members, but if it's, if it's a matter of a thousand-dollar fee, I, I don't have a problem with waiving that, but one of the, the problems that we're running into this year is that it does fall on his actual birthday, which is the national holiday, which means the city's closed. And so the staffers are, they don't come to work that day. That's, that's their day off, and so I had had, I had heard some concern from some of the city staffers that, well, it's not gonna be just a normal day, it's gonna, it's gonna be, I forget how many hours, and Mayor, if you, you may be privy, have you seen those figures? It was, it's a couple of people all day on a national holiday, and then you gotta talk about the liability. I don't know that we can assume that liability, we may want to ask city attorney, which is why all of these parading groups have to provide liability, because I know you wanted to have some, I don't know if it's inflatable slides and whatnot out in the parking lot, and for us to provide your organization with that insurance, I, I don't, I don't know where we have to draw the line on that. So that, that's why we had, had done that. It wasn't to put a burden on you, but it's also to take some liability off the city. That's why we require everybody that, that has a parade to provide that. You're not being singled out on that.
Yeah, no, Mr. Burrell, I just want to ask a question. And to, to the employees, we was the organization to ask the city, when this was started, thirty-three years old, city foul wasn't even lawn employees up. We the one came to the city and asked for employees to be up, and I think the other city, and wish we had it in there. Our organization was the prime, I think Mr. Wynn was here. I could look at trying to get, you know, special event liability insurance, I think that's like two hundred dollars. I can swing that with the organization to get a special event if you want it, that, you know, like I say, those requests has never been made to the organization, because it's a federally recognized national holiday, it's just like Veteran Day.
But, but, but the difference is, is that it's not the government putting on the parade, it's, it's, it's an organization putting on the parade, which, which then, if we give something to you like that, you know, I, I don't know-
Is it a 501(c)(3)?
Yes, it is a 501, I sent that information to them.
So I think, you know, like the city does with a lot of charitable organizations, we can enter into a contract arrangement where the city could assume some of those expenses in exchange for the benefit the city would receive by having the parade in the city.
Okay.
I think, I think something could be done, if the council decides to do it, it can be done.
What does that do with the liability issue?
What, what we're talking about is if it's a two-hundred-dollar premium or what it would be for that special event, the city could assume and pay it as part of the payment for the contract services, just like you give the lighthouse X amount of money, they enter into a contract to, to help women in, in Fairhope. It's the same type of thing, it would just be, it can be done.
Okay. Well, well, while he's here, counsel, do we want to discuss this further now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, as long as the city is covered from a liability standpoint, then I would have no issue waiving the fee.
We'd have to check with our insurance company, you know, it's only gonna be two ways. One way is the organization would have to pay the two-hundred dollars or whatever it is, or the city could assume that and pay it on behalf of the organization. We would have to get with our agent and see what type of rider he would want to put on and what the cost of that is.
Well, then, do we, do we want to, it's, what is the day of the actual-
January fifteenth.
January fifteenth.
Yeah, well, yeah, can we, can we do this at the next meeting, at the, the week from tonight? I mean, just so that we have time to check these things out?
We could.
I mean, I think it's better to be safe than sorry, to make sure that we're-
Well, the only thing we're gonna check out is the insurance liability, is that correct? Everything else is not a problem for the-
Well, why don't we just say y'all provide the insurance, and we do everything, waive